My cue.
All right, whenever you're ready.
All right. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April thirteenth virtual city council meeting of the city of Twalton. Thank you all for attending today, either by Zoom or by phone, or if hopefully it's streaming over cable on Frontier and Comcast on channel twenty-eight. So, this is that was the call to order. Rather than doing a pledge of allegiance, since we're not in the room and there's no flag present, I just want to take a moment to make a few comments, and then I'll be followed by Chief Steele. I want to thank the residents of Twalton for abiding by the governor's order for physical distancing. I've been out about around the city quite a bit, and the vast majority of your folks are abiding by the physical distancing. I know it's difficult to do. You want to be social, you want to do things, and it's hard to keep apart. But I see most people doing it. I know the struggle the city is having right now is in the parks, where kids want to get on and adults want to get on the facilities. So, the tennis courts, the racquetball, the pickleball courts, the basketball courts, the skate park. But all those facilities are closed because we can't keep distance there. So, please stay off the recreation equipment. You're more than happy to use the trails. That's what I see most people doing, or sitting in the green space, enjoying the sun. Go for that. But please avoid the playgrounds and the like. I also want to acknowledge those restaurants that are struggling right now. And if you have the ability to patronize the restaurants in the city that are still open and doing curbside and delivery. I used a few over the last few days, and they're very much appreciated, the business and the support of the community. Quite a few people were in there while or actually lined up on the curb when I was picking my food up this weekend. Remember to help out your neighbors. There are a lot of folks in our elderly community or disabled community that can't get out to Fred Meyer or to get some food, water, medication. Our police department is taking care of helping those folks who need pharmacy delivery. But if you know somebody who needs some help, please try to give them some help. I also want to thank our first responders, your police department, fire department. They're most at risk in addition to our medical personnel. They're doing a terrific job keeping Oregon healthy and behind the curve that we've seen happen on the East Coast. Our grocery workers are up there also as far as working their butts off to keep the shelves stocked and make sure that we have all the toilet paper, water, and items we can get. I know sanitizing wipes are still tough to get. Council has been busy as anything, trying to take care of both our residents and businesses. We've been on countless meetings with county officials, state officials, and our federal officials. This is the one time where I'm seeing everybody, no matter what party, working together, trying to work for a common goal, and making sure our businesses rebound and that our residents, while they're staying at home and losing their income, have some kind of relief. Today, I was on three hours worth of phone calls at different levels, everyone trying to work together and make people in Twalton and in the state as comfortable as possible, even though it's kind of we know it's tough. You know, items we've done, you've seen the eviction moratoriums for both city, I'm sorry, for both residential and commercial provisions. Tonight, you're going to hear a little bit about economic stability grants that the city's going to issue to businesses. So, everyone is working hard to help people out. I want to acknowledge Senators Wyden, Merkley, and our representative Susan Bonamici. They are meeting with us like crazy, and they are advocating super strong for residents of Oregon at the federal level to get some more relief dollars into both business pockets and into residents' pockets. And at the county level, Sheriff Harrington and Washington County mayors all meet quite rigorally. And on the Clackamas County side of Twalton, Sheriff Bernard is meeting with the Clackamas County mayors. So, I get to go to both meetings and find out what's going on both counties. I just want to put it out there that we're all in it together. You hear it over and over. You see it on TV, but we are. We're going to make it through this. Biggest questions we're getting right now is when is this going to end? I don't know if anybody has the answer quite yet. My prediction is, you know, we're pretty much going to probably live through this the rest of the beginning, through the rest of the month. And we'll see what happens in May. So, I want to yield the floor, if you will, over to Chief Bill Steele because we're hearing things about public safety. And, you know, we're hearing different things from different people and what, you know, the police are working on, everything from, you know, is domestic violence calls increasing? Is there any increase in child abuse? To, you know, what are the police doing about physical distancing? Is that something they're getting involved with? So, the floor is yours, Chief Steele. And you're muted, you're muted still, Bill.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, Bill Steele, your chief of police. Thanks for giving me a few minutes tonight. Yeah, I just wanted to reassure the public in the council that the police department is still out there. We're still providing a safe community for our community members. We're doing things a little bit differently, really trying to focus on keeping our limited amount of police officers safe and healthy. If you've seen in the media, I know there's at least four police officers within our Washington County area that have tested positive for COVID. So, that's something we're really taking serious precautions on to see if we can make sure we can keep that out of our workplace. We are doing things a little bit differently as an apartment. Usually, we encourage a lot of face-to-face contact with our community members. That's something we just can't reasonably do right now. So, when people have the need to call in for the police assistance, you're probably going to get a phone call first and probably even a few additional questions from our dispatchers, just inquiring about if anybody in the house is sick or displaying any signs of sickness, just so that our first responders can have that information in hand before they respond. So, obviously, things like our lobby are closed, but we're still available 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Initially, you know, looking back about a month down, when this really started to kick off, been monitoring our call load. It initially went down pretty significantly, but just comparing the last month to the same timeframe last year, our public demand calls were, those are the calls where somebody picks up the phone and calls in and requests some type of help. Currently, those are trending in about fifteen percent decrease over the same period of time last year. You mentioned domestic violence. That's something we're always keenly aware of. We haven't seen a spike in any domestic violence issues, fortunately, here in Twalton. In fact, just looking at the numbers, we've seen an increase of two calls over the same time as last year. So, not a significant increase, but, you know, it's something we're paying attention to. And I want people to always remember that there's still resources out there. The Family Justice Center that's been up and running for a little bit now, that's still available. They're not taking walk-in traffic, but you can still call and talk to people when you need help. The same goes with the Domestic Violence Resource Center. If you find yourself in need of a restraining order or assistance like that, you're probably going to need to make a trip out to Hillsboro to go to the courthouse. That's not a service that's being offered remotely right now. So, we're again, we're really paying attention to domestic violence, child abuse, suicide-type calls, really checking on the welfare of people. This is a tenuous time. Everybody's a little bit on edge, and we understand that. So, we're taking that into consideration anytime we can with our community contacts. If there is a bright spot to any of this, traffic congestion is down. Unfortunately, people are picking up the speeds a little bit. I'm sure you've seen some of that in the media as well. I-5 is just going crazy. We don't typically spend a lot of time on I-5 with our traffic officers or even our officers in general, but some of the speeds that we're seeing on I-5 are just getting ridiculous. I mean, I think the most recent one I saw was one hundred and forty-seven miles an hour, which is just, that's, it's just insane. You're just asking for trouble, anything. Even close to that, it's just crazy. But so, we're dealing with traffic issues still. Traffic is down, but we are still seeing a few crashes here and there. We're responding and taking care of those. Crime is still occurring in our community. That's just unfortunately a fact that we deal with as well. But we're managing that. We're still holding people accountable. You know, we've got a different set of rules, kind of, we're following in terms of, you know, who is going to take a trip to the jail when they're arrested for a crime. The jail in Washington County specifically is doing an outstanding job of managing that population, keeping the staff and inmates healthy and still being a resource for when we need to take people to jail. We will still do that. But the bookings that go into the Washington County jail, they're down significantly by design in a lot of ways. Typically, the jail in Washington County will see about fifty new bookings every single day, and now that number is well under ten. So, a lot of the people that are getting arrested aren't going to jail. They're getting a criminal citation to appear in court later. So, it's not a permanent get-out-of-jail-free card. They're going to be held accountable when this mellows out a little bit more and the criminal justice system gets flowing a little bit more smooth than it is right now. So, that will still occur for people that are out committing crimes. You're going to get arrested. You're going to go to jail when that's appropriate. Otherwise, you're going to get a citation to appear in court. So, that system will kick back up and run in when this turns a corner. We're still doing a lot of patrolling of the neighborhoods. We know our business community is a little bit on edge and concerned about some of their stores that are closed. So, we've documented a ton of extra patrols. We want to make sure that people know we're still out there taking care of the neighborhoods and the businesses. So, we're still out there flying the flag in a lot of ways. You know, we've got a lot of resources in place when it comes to, you know, we are, you mentioned the parks. You know, I got to give credit to the community as well, you know, for as much as our community loves the parks, they are doing a pretty good job of staying out of the parks. And, you know, we get an occasional complaint. We get a handful, probably two or three a day for, you know, whatever the circumstances are, and we'll respond and we'll deal with those. And, you know, primarily, our approach to, you know, violations of the governor's order has really been, you know, education first, followed by warnings. We haven't had to take any significant enforcement actions at this point, which is again, a kudos to our community for that. So, we've got, you know, a good amount of resources available still. But again, we're there 24 hours a day, taking care of the community. So, if there's any questions about what's going on, I'm happy to entertain that as well.
Where's the chief?
Yeah, I have that.
All right, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate all that you're doing. We think right now community safety and the feeling of safety is greatly enhanced, and it puts a lot of people's mind at ease to see you guys out and about in the community. But something that you said about if we had an issue, a domestic violence issue or a child safety issue, that the people would have to make their way all the way out to the Hillsboro courthouse?
Yeah, that would be correct. That would be for filing of a restraining order. So, that would, you know, those are, luckily, we don't issue a ton of those in our community. Since the Family Justice Center started, that was a resource that they didn't necessarily have to go all the way to Hillsboro. They still had to go to Beaverton, but it was a little bit closer than Hillsboro. That's just right now not a service they can offer remotely. So, that would have to be done at the courthouse in Hillsboro.
Is there any way that we can help with transportation out there if someone were to have an issue? Because I'm just thinking about the obstacles you'd have to surmount to be able to get help if we're all in lockdown, transportation is a problem. I mean, is there any way that we could help people?
Yeah, definitely, for sure. Our officers have access to providing people with some assistance with public transportation. So, we've got those, you know, resources in place if that need were to, you know, be presented. We could take care of that.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
You bet.
And then, and one of the few things that the courts are open for today are domestic violence, emergency custody, those type of orders. Courts are still available today to hear those.
That's Reyes.
Yeah, I just, Chief, I've just, I heard on the news and I've been reading on the going and about releases of criminals to the streets during this time. Have you heard of anything like that? Is there any concerns or comments you'd like to make on that?
You know, those are significant decisions that are being considered. I think, you know, the governor has done a wise thing by getting the right people at the table to be able to voice those concerns. So, the chiefs have had a voice in that. The sheriffs, I know the district attorneys are involved in that as well. You know, the people that are in prison, I hate to say, these aren't typically people that are going to get arrested for shoplifting, Fred Meyer, or anything like that. These are convicted felons that have done something significant to warrant that level of custody. So, I know those discussions are taking place. It would potentially be a strain on our local community if that were to occur. Those folks would come back in our community under the supervision of our Washington County Community Corrections Department. And I don't think they currently have the staffing to take on that additional of a caseload. So, I just know there are some very thoughtful conversations that are taking place before anything like that were to occur.
That was this, Counsel Reyes, that was the subject of the conversation today with Sheriff Harrington, that Washington County, in addition, most of the counties in the state are sending a message loud and clear to the Corrections Department that most counties cannot handle the size of the release of prisoners that has been discussed, that the probation or parole services in most counties are overwhelmed as they are right now, and that the additional load of prisoners being released is something they couldn't deal with. For example, the sample release, there'd be two-hundred-and-sixty-six prisoners released to Washington County. And as this chief was saying, they really can't handle that. And there's a concern with the mayors and with the chair that there's no transitional assistance for these prisoners because most of the not-for-profits are maxed out. So, there's a lack of placement to get these folks back into the community if they even, you know, had the ability to do it. So, the, I think the governor and the committee that's looking at this is hearing loud and clear from the county chairs and from their sheriffs to the state that they really got to think about this and that it might put undue burden on the counties and the cities. That you were leaving the prison population of the COVID- nineteen issue, but you might be causing more issues downstream into the cities and counties that we just can't deal with right now. Would you agree with that, Chief Steele?
Yeah, yeah, for sure, Mr. Mayor. Anybody, you know, the vast majority of the folks that are in the prison system will ultimately come back out into local communities. But to ensure, you know, you providing them the best chance you can for success, there's got to be a good transition plan set in place. And if you have to cut corners or expedite that process, it will come back eventually and, you know, cause you more concern later on down the road. So, again, I appreciate that the opportunity that the governors had to offer, you know, people at least to voice the concerns about what those impacts would be to the communities.
To answer your question, Counsel Reyes?
Yeah, I was just concerned about that because I did hear from people, are they going to be released into our streets, our kids, or, you know, in, you know, like when they're in school, they're a little protected because they're, you know, at least six, seven hours a day, they're protected in a school system. But when they, when they're home and their parents work or there's something's going on, I feel like that was just a concern that just one person asked me, oh, I heard criminals are going to be released. What's that going to look like for us? And I'm like, good question.
It was a fifteen-minute discussion today. Other questions for the chief? There's none. I think Chief Steele.
Well, I think Nancy might have one.
Oh, Nancy? You're muted, Nancy.
Oh. Okay. And you had mentioned that some of the business owners were concerned and we were increasing patrols around businesses that are closed. I know we had a little, like vandalism tagging activity when this first started around spring break time. Are we seeing an increase in those sort of vandalism-type crimes? Or we got that under control and we're kind of holding steady there?
Yeah, you know, really looking at those numbers, we're really on par with what we typically see at this time of the year. But again, you know, it's something we want to make sure we're reassuring the, you know, the community members, the business owners, that we are paying that extra attention to their businesses when, you know, I know they've got a little concern when they're not up and running as much as they have been in the past, and they're leaving their storefronts vacant. So, we're trying to do our best to make them feel a little bit at ease as well.
Thank you.
Counsel Brooks?
Thank you, Chief Steele. Thanks for everybody in our police department for all the work that they're doing during this time. I had just a couple questions about safety around our police officers. When you said you guys are doing things differently, is there, do you feel that you have enough like PPE and ability to social distance in how you work? That's my first question. I had another question, which was, do you I know that there's programs around helping with EMS and police officers and and also, we've talked a lot about parks and things like that, but I was just curious if the police are offering support or if there's been any need around for the local testing centers in our local hospital? And should I stop? I had one more. Should I stop there? Should?
Yeah, well, I'll handle the first two.
Okay.
In terms of protective equipment, we are, we've got what we need right now. You know, honestly, gloves, we go through literally thousands of pairs of gloves a year, even when me, I'm in my uniform, I usually have three or four pairs of gloves on me. So, gloves is a standard thing for us. Eye protection, we kind of went to a different type of eye protection that gives a little bit more protection for airborne, bloodborne pathogens, things like that. Our biggest hurdle initially was the N- ninety-five protective masks. We were able to acquire, you know, even honestly, through donations from our community members, our own staff members were bringing in masks that they had at home, and then we were able to get a good shipment in from the County Emergency Operations Center from the state. So, right now, we're sitting pretty good with protective equipment. It is a challenge for our officers in the field. You know, it's something we're strongly, obviously, recommending that they have readily available and dawn it as soon as it's feasible or reasonable for them to do that. But there are going to be times where that's just not feasible either. But we're doing everything we can to maintain that social distancing anytime we're contacting our community members. Sometimes we just need to get a little bit closer than others. And the other question, go ahead. I think I forgot the other one. I'm sorry.
That's fine. I, and I guess my question too was social distancing with each other because, you know, being from having roots in Michigan and seeing the amount of police officers that have fallen ill in the Wayne County area has been, and also, everybody's noticed in New York. So, you know, those were things that, of course, are on my mind. My second question was just how you guys are working with the hospitals and testing sites and?
Okay. Yeah, for social distancing, I will tell you, I'm in the, I'm still in the office quite a bit, but our office has definitely got a different feel to it. You know, we're a close-knit apartment, but now we have to space apart from each other. So, our normal routines would have been a shift briefing when officers show up, where everybody kind of gets together a table and we pass along information. That's just not being done at a table now. Everybody gets their equipment, gets in their cars, and then we do a Zoom briefing, just like we're having now. So, really, there's not a lot of contact within the police department. We're having to space ourselves out. So, that was that one. The other question about the hospitals, we do have a great working relationship in Meridian Park. We haven't had the need to have any additional presence at the Providence testing location, but we're ready to respond there as well. And again, you know, I speak so highly of TV FNR and the maintaining the relationships that we have with especially our Station Thirty-four. So, I just know even before I logged on to this meeting, our officers were out with the fire department for a person that had collapsed. And so, they're still administering CPR and doing those life-saving efforts. So, they're still out and about in the community. So, we haven't had a need for additional patrols or issues at the hospital or the testing locations, but we're ready to respond to those if they come up.
Thank you again for everything.
Any other questions for chief? All right. Thank you, chief, and please pass on to the members of our police department. Our deepest appreciation for doing what they're doing right now. Their job is tough, but now it's even more tough with COVID- nineteen. So, thanks again.
All right. Thank you. Stay healthy.
Oh, yes, thank you. All right. So, let's move on the agenda. So, next up is public comment, and this is always interesting with a virtual meeting. In public comment, this is an opportunity for anyone that addressed the council regarding items that is not on tonight's agenda. Please keep your comments to about three minutes. So, I've got three ways to look at people tonight or for the council to acknowledge them. So, first is if anyone is attending the Zoom meeting, you should open their chat window and type in your name so Bates can pass on to us that you'd like to address the council. Do we have anyone? Bates?
Apparently, there is no one signed up, mayor.
All right. So, then I'll move on to the second method of public comment for tonight. And is there anyone in the poll center who would like to comment tonight, Bates?
There is also no one at the poll center tonight, mayor.
All right. And the third way to address the council tonight is, is there anyone who has called in? Can you announce your names? And then Megan and Bates will write them down for public comment. Do we have everyone or anyone? Sorry. I see one person's name lit up. It was.
Looks like besides who is on the screen, there is a Mills user and a Gillis Watko.
Okay.
I cannot mute either of you if you'd like to participate.
Bates, can you unmute them and see if they just want to participate?
And Mills has added that they have nothing to add.
Is there anyone else besides Mills?
Gillis Watko is on here.
Looks like you're muted, Gillis.
I have nothing to add.
All right. All right. So, I think that's everyone. Do we have anyone popped in the last minute on the category number one?
No one has chimed in and no one has arrived at the.
All right. So, let's go ahead and move on to the consent agenda. The consent agenda are items considered routine that will be adopted by one motion unless someone in the council would like an item removed and heard separately later tonight. The consent agenda tonight consists of item number one, consideration of approval of the regular meeting minutes of April thirteenth, twenty-twenty. Item two, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Claim Jumper Restaurant. Item number three, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Elwan, Colorado. And item number four, consideration of approval of a new liquor license application for Bridge City Spirits. Would anybody like anything moved from the consent agenda tonight?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second?
I have a motion as second to approve the consent agenda as read. I'll go through my screen here because we do enroll call votes for all votes. So, Counsel Pratt? Counsel Morrison?
Yeah.
Counsel President Grimes? You're muted. Counsel Grimes, you're muted. Here you go.
Oh, I, sorry.
Counsel Brooks?
Hi.
Counsel Reyes?
Yes.
Counsel Kellogg?
Hi.
Did I miss anybody? And the mayor votes yes. So, the consent agenda is passed, approved.
Mayor, can I just jump in and ask that you head back to announcements and do the proclamation for volunteer appreciation?
Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. I skipped an item. So, item number- So uh item number one back there, thanks Sherilyn. Uh we have a proclamation declaring the week of April nineteenth through April twenty-fifth twenty twenty as Volunteer Appreciation Week in the city of Tuolton, and that will be read by Counsel Morrison. And you're you're still muted, Counsel Morrison.
There we go. We all said now. All right, sorry about that. I love technology. Okay, a proclamation declaring the week of April nineteenth through April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty as Volunteer Appreciation Week in the city of Tuolton, whereas the entire community can inspire, equip, and mobilize people to take action that changes the world. And whereas in two thousand nineteen, over two thousand four hundred volunteers contributed approximately twenty-six thousand hours of their time, an equivalent of about twelve full-time employees to the betterment of the community. And whereas volunteers give freely of their time, talent, and energy and ask only for a thank you for their countless hours of service. And whereas it has been a longstanding tradition in our community for individuals, families, and local businesses to volunteer to make a difference in our community, and whereas it is fitting to recognize our volunteers for their dedicated service, now therefore be it proclaimed by the city council of the city of Tuolton, Oregon that section one, the week of April nineteenth through April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty be proclaimed Volunteer Appreciation Week in the city of Tuolton. Section two, the city of Tuolton great takes great pleasure in honoring the volunteers of our community and conveying our sincere gratitude and appreciation for their commit committed selfless and compassionate efforts. Our volunteers truly make a world of difference. And and introduced and adopted this April thirteenth day, twenty twenty.
Thank you, Counsel Morrison. Uh I keep forgetting the stats, but we have a terrific core of folks here in Tuolton that love to give of their time to the city. Um I know it equates to several full-time positions in the city. Um everywhere from people planting trees, clearing blackberries to the library. Uh so I just want to acknowledge those folks. It's a shame we can't do our celebration we normally do. Uh but we plan to do have it sometime later in the year where we all can get together and uh acknowledge and thank you in person for all the things you do to make our city a better place to live and work. Anyone else have anything to add? No one. All right, so now let me go back and make sure I'm back on the same sheet of music here at the agenda. Uh so we're up to a special report, item number one, the Economic Stabilization Program Report.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of council, and for those watching, I'm Jonathan Taylor, the Economic Development Manager of the city of Tuolton. Tonight, I am pleased to present the uh special report regarding the Economic Stabilization Fund Program. Real quick, I'll outline the application process just to re-familiarize with everything because three weeks ago now feels like an eternity. So just to clarify what what we did at the last council meeting. So the ala, the application process had three components. Uh the basic acceptance of period was allowed any business to submit an online application at tuoltonoregon.gov to be considered for this grant funding program. Then the accepted applications from businesses pertained to the eligibility program for consideration included businesses with fifty-five or less full-time employees. The businesses must have a physical storefront establishment in Tuolton. Businesses must have had a current Tuolton business license. They also must experience a loss of income due to COVID nineteen and no national chains, but we define those as any excuse me, we define those as franchises or profit or for-profit corporations that were not headquartered in the state of Oregon or Washington County, but we allowed those that were Tuolton-based owned and operated. So that was the application process. And so in efforts to help promote that to our Tuolton-based businesses, along with the help of Megan, Betsy, and Garrett, we created several videos. Um I don't know if you saw those, but those are on uh our YouTube channel. Garrett did one in Spanish with Karina Rice in the finance department, as well as I did one for the general knowledge. In addition, we also had two simultaneous websites, one in Spanish and one in English with both applications respectively. And so for an entire week, um from Wednesday to that following Tuesday, March thirty-first at five P M, we received one hundred and forty-six applications, thirty-one percent of those were minority-owned businesses. Fifty-three percent of those were women-owned. And those uh businesses also employed three hundred and seventy-two individuals, uh and they came from uh all industry sectors in Tuolton. And this is where we knew we were going to hit um that wall. The total request was one point three million dollars for our local businesses. So right off the bat, we knew that while we are going to be able to help some businesses, the need is just great across not only the city of Tuolton, but Oregon. So how did we get to um that award and criteria ranking? So we established our eligibility, which was the basic criteria of what the businesses had to meet, which I just stated earlier. We made sure that they were in compliance, which did they have an active business license? Were they a legal business? Um were, did they have a storefront? Then we looked at economic impact. So they submitted an economic impact sheet. And then we took their profits from this time last year, compared it to this time this year. And then we use a ranking criteria formula, um and then we rank those specific businesses. And um once we compiled all that out of the one hundred and forty-three applications, we had sixty-two applications that made it through all those phases. And then um the awards were submitted to the committee, an internal staff committee, where they ranked the applications based on a numerical formula. Those numerical formulas included, was the business still open? Did they employ employees? Was the grant award one-third of the rented amount of their establishment? Were they currently in operation, et cetera? And so those totaled up to a number amount, and then we ranked those based on the rankings. And then we took the, I'm getting a little complicated, I understand, and it makes more sense in my head because I'm the, I'm the one that helped our committee go through it, so I'm kind of pretty in-depth with it. But to make it more simple, it was just a a non-biased ranking system that used numerical values to take out the bias. And then we inputted those awards and we came up with fifty-four businesses that will receive funding through the Economic Stabilization Fund. Those fifty-four businesses currently employ two hundred and seventy-one employees. A total of two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars has been awarded. The added two hu, the added two thousand dollars came from a notable community economic development uh partner, Northwest Natural Gas. They contributed to the fund, so we were able to add more, uh excuse me, we were able to award more money to uh eligible businesses. The average grant amount is four thousand six hundred dollars. The largest grant that we gave was ten thousand, and the smallest grant that we awarded was five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. Based on the economic impact and the ranking, both the retail service and restaurant industries made up seventy-two percent of the award applications. Uh the demographic percentages of these awards, forty-four percent are women-owned and forty-six percent are minority-owned businesses. And so I'm going to stop there before I go on to the closing remarks, just to ask if there are any questions, comments. At a high level, I intend, I intend to do a full uh with Sherilyn, a full report, report out written, you know, a little bit more in-depth and make it more kind of connect the dots without the kind of piecing it through video, but.
Questions for Jonathan? Counsel Brooks, and then Counsel Grimes after that.
Thank you very much for your very specific report. Um I, I really actually, I don't think I have a question. I just really wanted to commend you and the whole city for coming together, coming, finding the money and doing due diligence to try to help a variety of business owners that are impacted during this really horrible time for so many people in business. And obviously, like everybody else on our city council, we wish we could help everybody that applied. But to go through and do such a uh a process that with numerical ranking and go make it such a thorough process in such a short amount of time is really impressive. So I just want to say thank you.
Right. Counsel President Grimes. You're muted. You're still muted. There you go.
Here I am. Um Jonathan, I just wanted to thank you and the team. I I love that we're doing this and supporting our businesses, and I'm so glad we were able to get this moving so quickly and implement so fast. And I'm just wondering, with the fifty-four businesses that um were grant recipients, do you, do we have a number of jobs that we were able to save in Tuolton? Is there a way to quantify it in that manner?
So right now, I could possibly tell you the businesses that are currently open and those that 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 are employed. But I I don't think we would be able to adequately predict that. But I can give you kind of a overarching number of those that are still open, that are currently employing those individuals.
Okay, yeah, that would be nice to know. I know you mentioned at one point that there was, of the fifty-four businesses, there was, I think you said two hundred and seventy-one employees.
Yes. Yeah, so with those two hundred and seventy-one employees, some of them are currently working. That was noted in the economic impact. Uh but some of their responses were to either pay their salary through the remainder of the month uh to try to keep them on their insurance as long as possible. But I could provide that current number pretty easily.
Yeah, I would like to know that because I think that that's a huge um factor in knowing the success of the program is like how many jobs will we be able to save and people that we were able to keep on payroll and keep on benefits. Oh my gosh. To keep them with their healthcare benefits, which is enormous. I'd like to know that if we could.
Other comments? Anyone? Okay, I I'd like to thank Jonathan and Sherilyn and all the city staff for putting this together again, as Counsel Brooks said, putting it together quickly. Finding a a package of money that we can put together. Definitely want to thank Northwest Natural for adding to the kitty that we could hand out to community. Uh we all were concerned how many businesses we'd be able to help out. And you far exceeded my expectations, the amount of businesses we're helping in Tuolton. We all thought we might be able to help out ten or fifteen, uh but what you've been able to do and spread the wealth and uh make the maximum impact, the amount of dollars that we had, is exactly what the council wanted. And I just want to pass on my very much big appreciation for this effort. I think the community would be uh is very much uh in support of this. Uh I've seen lots and lots of folks who want to support our local businesses, and the city's helping out and um this is part of, you know, us being in this together and trying to help each other out through tough times and just lots of kudos. I can't say how, you know, happy I'm about how well this went.
So I do want to, yeah, close with this particular quote. So over the three weeks, you know, I I encountered not only some very heartbreaking stories, but also some very positive stories as well. And so I'm not going to state the business, but this is kind of what I heard, not only with the um kind of the upsetting aspect of this, but here's the quote. "The fact that my city stepped up before anyone else, not the state, not the metro, not the federal government, makes me damn proud not to only own a business in Tuolton, but to live here as well." So.
That's terrific. Thank you.
Oh, and the notifications will go out tomorrow. I think that was going to be.
That was my next question because a lot of people have been asking me that.
Completely just forgot, but yes, notifications will go out tomorrow.
By email, you're going to call folks, how they, how they expect to be told?
Uh the email address that they provided on their application. And then I've worked with Don and Sherilyn and Aquila, and we've got a system of how they submit their reimbursable grant that is both protect their identity, but also is speed up the process as quickly as possible.
Okay. All right, anyone else? Last chance with Jonathan here for a moment. Valerie.
Oh, I just wondered how many people were on the committee with you.
So I was not on the committee. I took myself off because I had, after, after about the first week and a half, I had some really in-depth conversations with these businesses, helping them out. So I had to impartially remove myself. But there were three hundred individuals on the committee.
Thank you all for your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks, Jonathan. So we'll go ahead and move on to our general business. So item number one is consideration of ordinance number one four three three dash two zero relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four. Uh as a reminder, remember, this is changing our requirements uh for an emergency meeting. We did not get a unanimous vote our last city council meeting, so this is back up for, I guess technically, Sean, a third reading.
That is correct, third reading and and for or possible adoption. And the only other thing I'd like to point out is uh section two of this ordinance does include uh an emergency clause that would make it effective immediately. However, if it, under the council rules five E four, if it's not unanimous, uh then that would not go into effect. That that clause would not go into effect. The ordinance would pass, but it would go into effect thirty days from now.
All right. You have any questions for Sean? Comments, discussion?
I have a, I have a comment.
For Paul.
Sorry, mute problems. Yeah, um I I'm just want to make sure that everyone's clear on where I'm coming from this. I think that we've gone through a lot of uh emergencies in the city. City's over a hundred years old now. We have gone through, since this code was revised, we've gone through flooding in the town. We've gone through a devastating shooting in the middle of the city. And I just believe strongly in in transparency, and I believe strongly in the element of time to let everybody get ready for something. And so my vote has not changed and is not going to change because I I just think that there's no reason to change that window of time, even in today's environment, and I guess there's a lot going on, given the history that we've had and given the problems that are associated as you shorten that window for emergency meetings and what actually constitutes an emergency. And so that's my, that's the lens that I'm coming from, and um I I just don't see and have never seen the need to change that.
Anyone else? Any other discussion, comments? Motion?
I'll make a motion to adopt or consideration of ordinance number fourteen thirty-three dash twenty relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash oh four.
Second.
I have a motion as second to approve ordinance number one four three three dash twenty related to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four.
If I can interrupt, so so we do have to have another reading of the ordinance, so so third reading. Uh so before we get to the adoption, uh there there need to be a motion for either a a reading by title or uh read the whole thing.
Does Counsel Brooks want to change her motion?
Yeah, make a motion for a reading of uh ordinance number one four three three dash twenty relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash oh four.
By title only.
Sorry.
Save Sean.
And Valerie?
Second.
So I have a motion as second for reading by title only of ordinance number one four three three dash twenty relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one dash zero four. Uh we do a roll call on this one, so I'm going to go on my screen here. So Counsel Pratt.
I.
Counsel Grimes.
I.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. Council Kellogg is muted. Council Kellogg, can you hear us? So Sean, what do we do if we can't get a hold of Council Kellogg?
So hi- his vote would be either unavailable or or yeah, does neither yea or nay.
All right. So I'll give one more shout out. Council Kellogg, can you hear us? Can you're muted for your vote on this reading? Okay, so it looks like we've got six yeses and one missing, not abstain, but the motion carries. So go ahead and third reading, please.
Or this number fourteen, thirty-three, dash, twenty, an ordinance relating to public meetings and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter one, dash, zero, four.
Okay.
I'm just curious if we should try to reach Council Kellogg by phone or email or something. Or text. I don't have his text number.
I just texted him and asked where he went. I haven't gotten an answer.
All right. So we still have enough votes to move on. We have quorum, so is there a motion to approve the ordinance?
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to approve. Sorry. Approve. Remove ordinance fourteen, thirty-three, dash, twenty, relating to public meetings and amending twelve municipal code, chapter one, dash, oh, four.
I'll second that.
Have a motion of second to approve ordinance number one, four, three, three, dash, twenty, relating to public means and amending to all municipal code, chapter one, point, one, dash, zero, four. I'll do a roll call vote again. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Council Grimes.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
No.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. And I vote yes also. So ordinance one, four, three, three, dash, two, zero is passed, correct Sean, but not in emergency mode, correct?
That is correct. So the emergency clause would not pass, so it'll go into effect thirty days from from adoption.
All right. All right. I have a late public comment resident who wants to address the council. That's Beth Roach. Beth, can you hear us? I can see Beth, I can't hear her. I can see her name, not her.
Yeah, I can't hear.
Bates, is she able to get in? Oh, so Bates, okay, I just got Beth has no audio and doesn't have a comment. Okay. All right. So we'll move on to item number two. Consideration of resolution number fifty-four, eighty-six, dash, twenty, amending rule two of the council rules. As you remember, this is just the associated changes in our council rules that are impacted by us approving ordinance number fourteen, thirty-three, dash, twenty, so we can do the housekeeping to update our council rules. Do you have any questions for Sean on this? Council Brooks.
Can you just do a brief explanation?
Sure. So under, under the council rules, it reflects what the code currently has in it, which is the forty-eight hour prior notice. And so what this would do is change the council rules to match what the new proposed ordinance is. So to change special meeting notices from forty-eight hours to not less than twenty-four hours. And special meetings includes emergency meetings.
Thank you.
Any questions, comments? Motion to approve the resolution?
I move, we approve resolution number fifty-four, eighty-six, dash, twenty.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve resolution fifty-four, eighty-six, dash, twenty, amending rule two of the council rules. Start off with Council Pratt for a roll call.
Aye.
Council Grimes.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
No.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. Still MIA. And the mayor votes yes, so resolution fifty-four, eighty-six, dash, twenty is approved. Moving on to item number three, consideration of ordinance number one, four, three, four, dash, twenty, relating to mobile food units and amending the Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter nine, dash, ten, to allow mobile food units to operate in the general commercial zones of budding ninety-nine W. I believe this is Aquila.
Yes, this is. This is Aquila. Good evening. Yes, so this was discussed over the last couple of months now about adding another zone, a portion of another zone into the municipal code where food carts are allowed. So tonight, what what you have before you is the ordinance that would amend the municipal code and allow general commercial that abuts ninety-nine W to have food carts in mobile food units there. And so there's two maps that were included in your packet. One shows the current zones that are listed in the staff report. So for the folks who joined us, who may not have seen the staff report, right now food carts are allowed in commercial office with exceptions next to the central commercial area, recreational, commercial, medical center, light manufacturing, general manufacturing, manufacturing park and manufacturing business park and the institutional zone. And so with this new ordinance, there's a few areas along ninety-nine W where food carts can be allowed. And one of the things that this will do is provide more options for the west side of Tuolton. And so staff's recommendation is that council adopts ordinance fourteen, thirty-four, dash, twenty, which will amend the municipal code. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Aquila? I see no hands. This is a reminder for folks who are listening or watching. I posed a question to both our Tuolton Chamber of Commerce and the Commercial CIO, who are both very supportive of this change to the ordinance so that the commercials up up that are around N M W have food options as things develop on N M W and one twenty-fourth. The desire is to keep, you know, ideally folks away from downtown Tuolton and clogging our core with traffic, so quick and easy availability of food. And also it still protects our downtown core restaurants that felt a little bit threatened by food carts. So it seems to be a win-win-win for vendors who would like to have their food cart N M W for folks to live and work around N M W. And for those brick and mortar store or restaurants still protected. Do we have any other discussion?
I move, I'll make a motion for first reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen, thirty-four, dash, twenty.
Second.
I have a motion of second for first reading of ordinance number one, four, three, four, dash, twenty, relating to mobile food carts. I'm sorry, mobile food units and amending to Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter nine, ten, will have mobile food units to our general commercial zones of budding ninety-nine W. So I'll go with a roll call vote. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Council Grimes.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. Well, not there. I I vote yes also. So that first reading is approved.
Ordinance number fourteen, thirty-four, dash, twenty, an ordinance relating to mobile food units and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter nine, dash, ten, to allow mobile food units to operate in general commercial zones abutting highway ninety-nine W.
I move for second reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen, thirty-four, dash, twenty, relating to mobile food units and amending the twelve municipal code chapters nine and ten.
Second.
I have a motion of second for second reading of ordinance number fourteen, thirty-four, dash, twenty, relating to mobile food units and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter nine, dash, ten, to allow mobile food units to operate in the general commercial zones to N W. Council Pratt.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
And Council Kellogg is still a mute, so maybe he has a distraction going on or some family emergency. I vote yes also, so second reading is approved.
Ordinance number fourteen, thirty-four, dash, twenty, an ordinance relating to mobile food units and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter nine, dash, ten, to allow mobile food units to operate in general commercial zones abutting highway ninety-nine W.
Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Need a second? Okay, who seconded?
Bridgette.
Okay, okay. I have a motion of second to adopt ordinance one, four, three, five, twenty, relating to mobile food units and amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter nine, dash, ten, to allow mobile food units to operate in the general commercial zones of budding N W. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Council President Grimes.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. I hear the mayor votes yes, so ordinance one, four, three, four, dash, twenty is adopted. All right. Item number four, consideration of ordinance number one, four, three, five, dash, twenty. Oh, thanks, Aquila. Conservation of ordinance number one, four, three, five, dash, twenty, relating to the Public Works Construction Code, amended Tuolton Municipal Code chapters two, dash, zero, three, and creating new provisions. I think this is Sherilyn.
Actually, Sean is going to give us a little briefing about it. And we also have Kim McMillan, our city engineer, available to help answer questions.
Thank you. Mr. Brady.
Great. So ordinance number fourteen, thirty-five, dash, twenty involves the Public Works Construction Code. And as you may know, the the Public Works Construction Code is how the city implements its design standards for all its public improvement projects right away, those type of things involving sewer or stormwater, right-of-way streets, all of that. And so traditionally, what has happened is is under the current code is those those rules come to council for consideration and then adoption by resolution. And what this has resulted in is is kind of a delay in trying to get some additional resources or design standards changed. And so what this ordinance does is to allow allow for an administrative rule process by staff to to conduct that adoption. And what the process involves is first a notice of proposed rulemaking would go out. So staff would draft up whatever the proposed rule is, whether that's a change in a size of a pipe or a valve or whatever the case may be. And in that, they would have draft language that would be proposed to be adopted. That is sent out to put on the city's website as well as sent out into an interested parties list. And that list, anybody can get on that list. And so the city would just keep it, keep track of of that list. And whenever there's a proposed adoption, it would go out to everybody to look at that rule. And then there's a fifteen-day comment period for the public on the website, as well as any interested parties have at least fifteen calendar days to then comment on that on that proposed rule. And then ultimately, after those fifteen days, then the the rule can be adopted. And then it's published on the on the city's website as well. So that so that's the staff administrative process, administrative rule process. And then there's also a provision in two, dash, three, dash, zero, seven, zero, proposed ordinance that would allow council on its own motion to take up any of those rules that that administrative rules are adopted. You could have public hearing on it, whatever you you want to do, and then choose to either keep the rule as is, amend it, or adopt any new rule through that process as well. And then that council process would be by resolution. So with that, that's a summary of the ordinance itself. If you have any technical questions about the Public Works Construction Code, Kim would certainly be the better person to answer those.
Questions for Kim or Sean? Council Pratt.
I I shared this with Sherilyn, but my only concern with this is if we have things that are very visible to the community and my example is streetlights. And I know many years ago Sherwood put in street, new streetlights and that, you know, people have very strong opinions about things like that. So it, would it only be people that had signed up for this list that would be no notified? I mean, a lot of this stuff is just you know, little detail stuff that doesn't matter. But on things that are very public facing, would there be a way to have an additional process to have more outreach to the community?
Good evening, councillors and Mr. Mayor. This is Kim McMillan. Sorry, the lighting got dark and my lighting's not good. Yeah, I think that it would be the same process, but we would be happy to add all the council members to that interested party list. And having done a lot of capital projects, I'm very sensitive to those things that are above ground that people see every day. So I want to make sure that you have an opportunity to comment on every detail of that that you would like to. So we can make that happen. And we'll also be sending this out, I'm sure, to several of the consultants that we work with on a regular basis that do our capital projects or do private development. So we want to make sure to capture comments from as many people as possible.
Thank you. It, I think we're the ones that often get to hear people's comments, so.
Right, right.
It would be good to have a way to relay that back.
Other questions or comments?
All right. Would you like a motion there?
That'd be terrific.
Okay, motion, mo- motion to approve consideration of ordinance number one, four, three, five, dash, two, zero, relating to the Public Works Construction Code, amending, amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter two through dash, oh, three, and creating new provisions by title only.
I have a motion of second for re- first reading of ordinance one, four, three, five, dash, twenty, relating to the Public Works Construction Code, many Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter two, dash, zero, three, and creating new provisions. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Council, Council President Grimes.
Aye.
Council Brooks.
Aye.
Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
Council Kellogg. Missing. And I vote yes. So first reading is approved.
Ordinance number fourteen, thirty-five, dash, oops, sorry.
Go ahead.
Ordinance number fourteen, thirty-five, dash, twenty, an ordinance relating to the Public Works Construction Code, amending Tuolton Municipal Code, chapter two, dash, zero, three, and creating new provisions.
I'll make a motion for a second reading by title only, ordinance number fourteen. I'll make a motion for second reading by title only ordinance number fourteen thirty-five dash twenty.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, or second reading. Of ordinance one, four, three, five, dash, twenty relating to public works construction code, amending to municipal, Twalton municipal code. Chapter two dash zero, three, and creating new provisions. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
Counselor Brooks.
Hi.
Council Morrison.
Yeah.
Council Reyes.
Yes.
And the mayor votes yes with Counsel Kellogg, uh, not available.
I'm staying.
Abstaining, I don't think. Whatever you classify it as, Sean. Unavailable to vote, I guess.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty-five dash twenty, an ordinance relating to the public works construction code, amending to Walton municipal code, chapter two dash zero, three, and creating new provisions.
I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance fourteen thirty-five dash twenty.
Second.
Motion, a second to orin- to adopt ordinance one, four, three, five, dash, twenty relating to the public works construction code, amending twelve full code, chapter two, dash, zero, three. And creating new provisions. Counsel, so I'm gonna reverse this for, to change things up. And we'll start where Counsel Reyes. Counsel Morrison.
Yeah.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
Counsel Pratt.
Aye.
And I vote yes also. Counsel Kellogg, are you there? All right, he is missing, so that passes. So ordinance one, four, three, five, dash, twenty is adopted. Uh, item number five, consideration of ordinance number one, four, three, six, dash, twenty. Amendment twelve municipal code, chapter one, dash, zero, six. Related to new provisions of the personnel rules. And I see Stacy's here.
Yes, I'm sorry, um, Sean will give a brief update and Stacy is available to answer questions and jump in, um, with any comments as well.
Thank you.
All right, ordinance, number fourteen thirty-six, dash, twenties, uh, like the prior ordinance. Um, the human resources rules are currently adopted, uh, by council. So staff. Drafts those up and, and then they're presented to council for final adoption by resolution. What this ordinance does is again modifies the current practice to allow for. The, uh, city and the city manager to adopt, um, administer, or excuse me, uh, human resources or employment rules. Um, and then those rules are both published, both publicly as well as available to city staff, obviously. And then again, in, uh, twelve municipal code and the proposed ordinance one, dash, six, dash, zero, seven, zero. There is also a, a council process that if the council wants to adopt it, uh, its own. Uh, or, or wants to adopt its, uh, an adminis- or excuse me, an employment rule. That it can do so and would do that by resolution through this process.
Any questions for Sean or Stacy? Counsel Pratt.
Oh, I'm unmuted. Uh, I guess my question would be if. We had a person other than Sherilyn in this role and they did something, put in some rule that was very untoward. And what, what does, what is the process for council to kind of undo that rule or override it?
So the, the council on its own motion could take up that rule and then change it through the resolution process.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Counsel Brooks.
Um, I guess I have a question around communication then if there's real changes. Is the council informed afterwards instead of being part of the decision-making process? And how, what is this supposed to look like?
So in, in this ordinance, uh, it, it requires that the employment rules be, uh, compiled and published. Uh, to employees and to the public on the city's website. Uh, administratively, again, we could certainly add the council to that notice process to, uh, ensure that any changes that the council is up to date on.
I think that would be important for that, to Valerie's point, um, in both of these things because you can just lose a train of in- information. If we don't have it on our agenda, we can miss that and, um. And, and miss something that was an important change.
Okay.
I don't know what everybody else thinks, but.
I think just like the, uh, last ordinance is if we're looped in and notified of it, I'm sure we'll hear from. City personnel who are impacted something by something negatively. Um, and as long as we're informed of things that are happening, I think that's great.
I, I have a question there.
Sure.
Yeah, Sean, I, I noticed in one of the sections, the, the word shall was, um, changed to, um. I believe it was must. I'm not an attorney, but I do understand, um, having. Some background in the word shall. What's the rationale for changing that word? Is that just give you more flexibility or is there a reason that? You didn't want shall in there? It's in section two. Or maybe more sections, but it's specifically in section two of, uh, one, dash, six, zero, three, zero.
Yeah, so, so, uh, generally the, that, when you see the word shall, that, that is, uh. What I'll call kind of an old school drafting of, of legalese. Um, and what, what the courts have, have interpreted shall to mean is sometimes shall means must and sometimes shall means may. Um, and there's multiple ways to interpret the word shall. And so the new type of drafting is when, uh, when you mean that you must do something, say must, and when you need, you mean. You may do something, say may, or, or, or if it's a future tense, maybe it's a will. But, but that, that's the reason for that drafting change.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Comments? Questions?
I'll make a motion for first reading by title only for ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, dash, twenty.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for first reading of ordinance number one, four, three, six, dash, twenty, amending to Walton municipal code, chapter one, dash, zero, six. Relating to new provisions of the personnel rules. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Grimes.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah.
Counsel Kellogg. Mayor votes yes, uh, so first reading is approved.
Ordinance number one, four, three, six, dash, twenty, an ordinance relating to the personnel rules, amending to Walton municipal code, chapter one, dash, zero, six, and creating new provisions.
I'll move for second reading by title only of ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, dash, twenty.
Second.
I have a motion, a second for second reading of ordinance number one, four, three, six, dash, twenty. Amendment to all municipal code, chapter one, dash, zero, six relating to new provisions of the personnel rules. Counselor Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel Grimes.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah.
And the mayor votes yes. Counsel Kellogg. Right, so second reading is approved.
Ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, dash, twenty, an ordinance relating to the personnel rules, amending to Walton municipal code, chapter one, dash, zero, six, and creating new provisions.
I'll make a motion.
Which one did you just read, Sean? That, that was that number five?
Uh, I've just read ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, dash, twenty.
Okay.
Relating to the personnel rules.
Right, because it varies a little bit from what I'm seeing, but it's there, right?
Okay, well then I'll, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number fourteen thirty-six, dash, twenty. To amend Twalton municipal code, chapters one through six, to allow for city manager authorization to amend personnel rules.
Second.
I have a motion, a second to approve ordinance one, four, three, six, dash, twenty, amending twelve municipal code, chapter one to six relating to new provisions of personnel rules. Ooh, Counsel Pratt.
Aye.
Counsel President Grimes.
Aye.
Counsel Brooks.
Aye.
Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Counsel Morrison.
Yeah.
And I vote yes also. Give Counsel Kellogg an opportunity. All right, so the ordinance is adopted, one, four, three, six, dash, twenty. Thank you. Uh, last item of general business, item number six. Consideration of resolution number fifty-four eighty-nine, dash, twenty. Ratifying the mayor's order declaring a moratorium on residential and commercial evictions within the city of Twalton during the COVID-nineteen state of emergency. Maybe, I, I don't think there's any staff presentation, anything that, uh, Sean or Sherilyn needs to add. Sherilyn shaking her head, no.
Nothing, nothing from the staff.
Right. Uh, so as many of you know, I issued this emergency order, uh, last week. It's a blur right now. Um, to ideally prevent evictions on both residential and commercial. Uh, I was hearing from several of our business community, uh, tenants. That, uh, they were scared they were gonna get evicted because they couldn't make rent payment, right, rent payments. Uh, and that their tenant, their landlords were not being very flexible, even if they could make a partial payment. Um, so we filed suit of the cities around us. And I asked to have that drafted in and I approved it. And then within hours of my issuing this commercial and residential eviction, Governor Brown. Issured her own for both residential and commercial for the whole state. Um, so what we're doing here now is just, uh, changing my, uh, mayor's directive, my emergency order. Into a resolution. Is there any questions, concerns, discussion for Grimes?
I have a question, um. Because I, I totally appreciate the direction we're going with this, first of all, but my question is. Um, what sort of relief is there for the landlord themselves? Because my concern is if you have a tenant. That's unable to make a rent payment because of the current climate, which I totally understand. I think we're all in economic hardship here. If the tenant not making the payment forces the landlord to not make a payment. Then to their mortgage company or whatever, and it forces a property to even possibly go into, um, foreclosure. That's not gonna do the tenant any good because they're gonna be. In trouble if the landlord goes under. Is there some sort of a provision for help for the landlord?
No, this is a moratorium of evictions, not to dispense aid to landlords. And with the other mayors and with, uh, our state and local, our state and federal folks. The expectation is that this is not a waiver. This is just a deferral. And that the landlords will get their, their rent. Uh, ideally what's gonna happen is that the funds will be flowing from the state and from the feds. And if possible, from the counties and cities to help those businesses make their payments. Um, and again, that's the ideal. Um, when I talked to the Chamber of Commerce and several other folks who are actually landlords, they were okay with this. Um, that they understood the need, uh, but yeah, there might be landlords who, um, who don't own their properties whole out. Uh, this is just a deferral and I'm sure they can work with their bank. Because I doubt any banks gonna foreclose on anybody right now, uh, for late payments. I think Counsel Brooks had her hand up, or I see Counsel Morrison does, okay.
Yeah, thank you. Um, I wanna, uh, originally I was just totally against this for a, a lot of reasons, and I think. Uh, Council President Grimes, uh, touched on one of them. There, there's a lot, there's a huge safety net that's getting developed for residents, for renters. There's a huge safety net for, um. Homeowners, the businesses, you know, we just, today, you just heard a report that we're giving out two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in grants. That said, um. In talking, and I also, I've talked to a lot of people and I can't find anyone who objects to this because. Most of my friends, I would say all of my friends, I don't have that many, many, um, they're all, they're all good players. Um, they all understand the situation and I think it's unfortunate that in, um, this day and age, we need an, an ordinance or resolution like this. To basically, uh, keep bad players from being bad. And so, um, yes, there is, there is no alternative to the landlord. And some of our landlords are literally mom and pops and they have no alternative. But they do, and, uh, I believe. Have resolution with their mortgage holders that they are, uh, and there is relief available then. We've seen that through, uh, and through the FBA process. And I know earlier today, Frank, you were on a, a call and talking about some issues with, um, with your FBA. But we also been on calls this week where the FBA is, um, now said that, or I've been on calls where the FBA has now said over two thirds of all the funds made available by Congress. Have already funded. So yes, there is some lag with some business owners, but a lot are getting restitution. And so, um, I, I clearly over, uh, the last three weeks changed. Um, changed my thought process in, in protecting, uh, those in our community who need protecting.
Counsel Reyes.
Yeah, I, um. I'm with Counsel Morrison and Counsel Grimes. Yeah, if you ask me that, uh, maybe a month ago, I would, it would be a different story, but. I was thinking of all those, um, individuals that own property and rent it out to other people. And, um, if one doesn't make the payment, then it will create a ripple effect and it will definitely put someone. Upside down because you still have those fees, you still have those charges. So, um. Although it sounds like, like when we're, we're thinking about these moratoriums, so we're thinking about the big banks or the big companies, some, or like. Like apartment complex or, you know, but what about those landlords that are just. Uh, renting out just, just to, to, you know, a couple of properties out there. Um, are they're not protected at all? That's what you're saying, right? Is that what moratorium said?
Well, the moratorium is to prevent evictions for residential and commercial. So yeah, like a couple of folks have said, what's the protection from the landlord? And the landlord is that this is not a waiver, it's just a deferral. And that more than likely. You mortgage holders of those landlords are also gonna be very patient with them paying back their loans. Uh, because as Counsel Morrison said, everyone wants to be a good player, but there's a few players out there in the community. Uh, there aren't, and, um. I felt the need to do this and so I, obviously so did the governor in the state.
Right, and I understand that, um, uh, mayor, and I think it's good that we're talking about it right now because there's other people out there listening to us. Um, I feel like what I'm saying is that, um, what if like the bad players that were, they're out there, for instance. Come three months and then they leave. Don't pay the three months that they were deferred to do, you know, that, that they were default of paying. Then that landlord is already, will be behind because by the time they get, find somebody. To take on that, uh, new renter, renter, they're paying, they have to, they, at one point we have to pay. So, um, so I feel like. Sometimes when we think of companies where, when we're making a lot of moratoriums or things like that, we're thinking about the big guys and we're thinking about. People who have like multiple apartment complexes and multiple things and sometimes. People that are renting to the neighbor next door or to like, you know, somebody because. They have an extra room or they have an extra this and then, um, three. Three months come and they just leave and then there's that landlord that was waiting because it was deferred. Does that make sense? I'm trying, I don't know if it's making, if I'm making any sense, but there's that landlord that was waiting for that defer payment. To come in, it's not coming in because that, that occupant left already. So you're practically, you know. You're gonna, you're gonna get screwed, so.
Well, I mean, even if say the moratorium wasn't there and the tenant didn't pay. Um, then they'd have to go to legal proceedings anyway to get the money or victim. So at the end of the moratorium, if they're not paid full, they're still gonna have legal recourse to get that money. It doesn't, again, this is not a waiver, it's just a deferral. So if a tenant is, you know, packs up and leaves without paying, that landlord has full access to the legal system to collect those uh, rents there in arrears.
You didn't go back three months, or just from that moment forward? Or like, I mean, I, how, how, how would that look like?
We're, I mean, the, all we're doing is deferring rent right now.
I understand, I understand.
The ordinance doesn't even get into the weeds of this, this is, that's a, I'm gonna defer to Sean. We're not getting the weeds of how to resolve the deferment process because that is the legal system take care of that.
Yes, so, so this, this and the governor's order uh, both just prevent a landlord from uh, from evicting somebody, uh, whether that's a residential or a commercial tenant uh, for a period of time, at the end of that time, they would still owe that rent for whatever that period of time they didn't pay. And they would still uh, ultimately uh, could still be subject to eviction at some point in the future when the, when the um, emergency is ended.
Does that answer your question, Counsel Reyes?
Yeah, I just wanted to be, to people to hear exactly what's happening on the moratorium, not everybody goes and read it, understand what's going on. These are simple explanations that people, the general public can understand, so thank you very much.
Sure, Counsel Brooks. And then Counsel Grimes after that.
Um, well, first of all, thank you for moving quickly on this, I know there's people that um, are worried not only about their businesses, but also just where they're gonna live, and when people are trying to shelter in place and wash their hands and all the things that we need people to do, it's really important for public health to be thinking along these lines, in my opinion. Some of the conversation we were talking about just now brings to mind that there are some, I think there's some tools that the banks are using as well for deferrals, and then there's also the fact that people that are, um, that are in the business of renting are also businesses that can be available to have um, relief from the small business loans and other relief programs that are going out, so there's, there's um, an argument that there's um, access for people further up the chain for support from government monies that are going out right now. And I think that people that are business owners, landlords included, um, most people are educated in their business, so I wanna just say, it's not that there's nothing there for people that are in the business of being landlords, and um, like you said, there's so many people that I've seen stories about people that are in these positions that are being very generous, that are being very understanding. Um, and, and then there's always sometimes people, and we've seen it in a lot of different industries where there can be um, a little bit of a, I don't wanna call everybody predatory, or um, but just less um, flexible, so I think there's a bigger picture of um, of public health and safety, and then economic stability in our area. And so, thinking in big picture is really important right now, there's um, I don't think there's any perfect solutions, there always may be a case scenario where somebody's gonna get hurt. And um, there's gonna be some fallout from all of this that's happened. Um, but we just want as many people to, you know, we want our economy to stay strong, we want our population to stay strong, and so I just, I appreciate the, the move, thank you.
Counsel Grimes.
Thank you, um, and I, and I understand, I appreciate the fact that we're now sort of aligning ourselves with the governor's mandate.
The governor aligns herself with us.
Yes, yeah, our, our swiftly moving mayor, so, so I do appreciate that, um, you know, I, I do wanna register a concern though, that um, I, I think putting a moratorium on evictions during this difficult time is important, but I also just wanna have it out there, that I do feel like there is this idea that this is predicated on, which is the fact that, you know, all landlords everywhere have some sort of ability to access redress so that they'll be made whole during this period of time, and that may or may not be true in all instances. But I do appreciate the idea of a moratorium. I realize this is for the length of time that we're in the COVID state of emergency, so is there a sense of how long that is, and what do we as a council have to do to formally leave that state of emergency, or is that something that the governor does?
So the latest I heard today is the governor's for seeing this through the rest of the month, and partially into May. Um, and what time in May, I don't know. But she is continuing her state of emergency, and our emergency has no end date in the city. Uh, we declare a, either a resolution or an ordinance declaring our state of emergency has ended. Um, but right now, there's no end date, I heard Multnomah County Board of Commissioners extended uh, the county through July for their state of emergency. So, no one, no one's given a date yet where they're envisioning the stay-at-home orders to end, but uh, best guess right now is at least through April, we're still gonna be uh, physically distancing, and ideally sometime in May, the, right now, Washington County's numbers are steady. Um, we're keeping that. There, there's no big resurgence right now, there's no emergency, if you will. Our hospitals are not being overwhelmed right now because the early adoption of stay-at-home. So we are flattening the curve right now, and pretty much the whole west coast is, but no one's saying when we're gonna be out of this, at this point. I got a couple of handles, but I gotta finish with Counsel Grimes.
Right, thank you, sorry, and I don't mean to belabor this point, but since, I mean, do you see us as a city aligning ourselves with the state as far as when we will declare ourselves out of the state of emergency?
That's what I would assume, that when the governor feels the states out of the, the woods, if you will, is that this will probably fall quickly in line.
Okay, thanks.
At Counsel Brooks, and then Counsel Reyes.
I was just gonna add to your point, there was something from the Oregon Health Authority that they published, and a lot of the indicators that they were looking at for readdressing the measures were um, dated May eighteenth, which I remember, cause it's my birthday, and um, but, so I don't, I think that they're looking at assessing for that, um, I also wanna say, as far as from what I understand, um, the World Health Organization is going to be publishing guidelines for how to slowly open tomorrow, and they're pushing forth s- strategies like Cuomo and the East Coast group of governors, and then I guess we have our west coast group of governors now with alliance that we have with um, California and Washington State. So I, but even when I listened to his address today, as far as normalcy, everyone is talking about, you know, when there's a, a vaccine, which is you know, a year and a half away, so there's just, um, they started reopening in, the city in Japan, and then they had another outbreak, so they had to go back to state of emergency, so I just think um, being, you know, I've just been trying to watch and look at patterns, and then look at what they're suggesting around best practices around um, from the healthcare perspective, as well as from what we're learning from lessons from other areas, I just wanna say that's what I've seen.
Counsel Reyes?
Yeah, um, Frank, have you uh, heard anything from uh, Clackamas County? I know you mentioned Wa- Washington County, anything that would be relevant for the, the Twalton residents who live on, who live on the side of Clackamas?
Clackamas County is pretty much um, in sync with Washington County, so three counties are working together to have one unified message. Uh, so they're not veering that much further away than Multnomah County, Washington County, and themselves. So the, all three county commissioners, or county chairs are working in sync, so that it's one unified message, that one county doesn't split from the other two. Any other, Valerie?
Oh, I just wanted to um, address what Counsel Reyes, I think she was getting at, cause that was my um, big concern with this is like, you have people that are, maybe they're retired, or like she said, maybe they have an duplex, or an extra room they're renting out for supplemental income that they really need, so this would really hurt them if they don't get their rent, but as I went through the thought process, to me, it's, um, well, first of all, we're in this situation where I think it would be very hard to um, get a new renter in, in this situation, and um, so that would be difficult, and by the time, I don't know, I just think um, it, it's a terrible situation we're in, but I don't think um, it would necessarily benefit someone if they're rent, you know, they, we didn't put this moratorium, or you didn't put this moratorium, I don't know that they would end up being in a better um, position in the end, and then you're taking a lot of health risk on top of economic risk during this period.
And, and to that point, I just, I, I bring it up because I think it's important for people out in the community to know, and this is, this is a way of them getting the information, because a lot of them might not have access to computers, especially with the library being closed right now. Um, so this is important for those um, apartment complexes, or people that live in, or like, like have duplex, or rent a room to someone, um, we, a lot of people don't have a lot of disposable income, like, so when we think about creating these moratoriums, let's not think of just the big apartment complex, or big people that have maybe loans, or, but also the ones that will be affected, um, that are, are, are seniors, or retirement, or people that you know, use that as, as their, to continue paying their mortgage, and, and, or paying other things like medication and things like that, so it's just the, being conscious of that as well, when we're thinking of these um, these kinds of guy, uh, ordinance, or um, I guess orders that are out there, those, I wanted to say that, clarify.
Thank you.
Alright, so, is there a motion to be made for the resolution?
I'll make a motion to, what do we do, um, read, read or approve?
Approve, we don't have to read this one.
Okay, I make a motion to approve cons- um, resolution number five four eight nine dash twenty, ratifying the mayor's order declaring a moratorium on residential and commercial evictions within the city of Twalton during the COVID nineteen state of emergency.
I have a motion as second to approve the resolution number five four eight nine dash twenty, ratifying the mayor's order declaring a moratorium on residential and commercial evictions within the city of Twalton during the COVID nineteen state of emergency. Uh, go through the roll here, Counsel Pratt.
I.
Counsel Grimes.
I.
Counsel Brooks.
Hi.
Counsel Reyes.
I'm gonna say no, because I, no.
Hi.
Counsel Morrison.
Yes.
So the resolution approved six to one. Uh, that is all for general business, we had no items removed and consent. So we'll move on to council communications, and we'll start with Counsel Pratt.
Oh, well, a lot of what I wanted to say, um, Mayor Boobinak already said at the beginning was just that I've been really impressed with the community social distancing, um, with, um, yeah, the politicians is from local to state level, and also city staff, just um, keeping the um, updates going, and communications to not only us, but to the community. Um, and then, oh, I have a nice little story, I was at the Twalton Food Pantry on Wednesday morning, and um, there were several envelopes that were handed out from um, members of the chamber had donated the cards, and I was so impressed, cause I thought, you know, a lot of these people are probably little business people that are really suffering, and they still took the time to donate, so, kudos to them. That's it for today.
Can I just put in a little plug for that program, so that's the Gift Card for Good program? That um, we put it out on social media, as well as um, there was an article in the paper, thank you, Ray, he was on here. Um, and then the chamber uh, picked it up, and so the, the deal is buy gift cards from local businesses and drop them off at the library book drop. We're collecting them, and um, then sending them to the food pantry, and you can also buy them on the chamber's website, um, it's a little clunky to do that, but um, but we are able to, to do it through the chamber's website, and they'll buy the cards and um, deliver them. I think so far, we've had um, in the neighborhood of twenty-five, and it's been going for a week, so.
Okay, that's really cool.
And I give kudos to uh, Sherilyn, cause Sherilyn and Linda Mulholland work closely on getting this up and running, so thanks to both Linda Mulholland and Sherilyn for making this possible. So we're up to Counsel Brooks.
Okay, well, I, I just wanna say thank you as well to the community and to Oregon for doing the stay-at-home, stay-safe order so well. I read um, statistics that stated that because of people's working together with the order, that we have avoided up to eighteen thousand cases of COVID nineteen in our state. That's an amazing number to me, it's a concrete number, and it's something to be really proud of. We would have, I know there's economic concerns, and we would have these negative outcomes, but we would also have an added um, up to five hundred people hospitalized for COVID nineteen, and eighteen thousand people if we hadn't done the work that we did as a community, so I feel really blessed and proud, and um, and grateful for all the action people are doing in Twalton, and all the work, and people reaching out with their concerns. I did go to um, the virtual PAB meeting, so just for updating you guys. We did a lot of business, we um, approved the the um, draft twenty twenty-four consolidated plan for fiscal year twenty twenty. We approved the draft analysis of impediments, which is impediments, those are difficulties for people that are trying to rent. Um, and this is all with regards to the housing needs. And then, we approved the Work Systems Inc. request for proposals, there'll be a new program to help people with employment that is included in PAB. So they're looking for somebody that's gonna help run that program. And then, um, we got a, an informal update of the CARES act stimulus funding, um, and that's the, you know, the federal money that comes to the state. Um, there's two buckets that, and this goes through, this will be looking at at PAB, and it goes through, one bucket goes through the CBDG funds, which is the funds that we, um, that are, that are granted through um, Washington County, and that, of that, I think they're estimating that possibly one point three million of that will come through to Washington County. And then there's an ESG uh, program, four billion has been appropriated nationally um, with the first two billion supposedly being dispersed, but it's only been with the first two billion supposedly being dispersed, but it's only been one billion so far. And out of that, Washington County is estimating, it was not solidified at the time of the meeting, but possibly six hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars. So those monies are not included in the budget that we approved. But it will be something that we'll be talking about and having consideration around in the future. And that's some of the stuff, and we had talked about emergency housing and help for mortgage relief, some of the things that people are concerned about, especially with the small landlords, people's homeowners, people that are going to need gap money to stay in place and avoid foreclosures and evictions. Those are some of the ideas of what that money would be used for. The other thing I wanted to talk about is this month is April. And we didn't put on the agenda to do a, to do a a statement proclamation around Earth Day, but I do want to say that this year is the fiftieth anniversary of the Earth Day celebration. It's April twenty-second. And they were going to have a huge celebration. Obviously, they're not doing that at the Capitol with Leonardo DiCaprio and this and that. And I do, out of all the horrible things that we've been dealing with, with the coronavirus, one positive bright spot has been some of the environmental awareness and and sort of a break that the environment's gotten. So I just want people to, when they're rethinking about how they're going to reopen, when they're rethinking about what maybe changes they might have, just bringing awareness to Earth Day this month. And, and we've just gone through these, these holy days. So I just want to say happy holidays to all everyone and all the different religions. And, and then I talked with Sherilyn about maybe next year we could put a proclamation on for Earth Day for our city. I think it's, for me, I feel like it's time. Thank you.
All right, Councillor Reyes.
Yeah, no, it's been, it's been a really interesting month. And I think that what I have enjoyed during this time that I've been around the community has been talking to people more about how they feel. You know, the, it has allowed me to, I, I stopped riding my bike for a little bit and now I'm riding my bike all over again because I have a lot of time now to do it. And which has allowed me to just stop with the mom, you know, I just meet people that I have been seeing in a little while. So it's been interesting. I, I haven't talked to a few people since the diversity task force. We haven't met. We're going to meet this Wednesday as Zoom, but so I needed to go out there and just meet with people again and, and ask them how they feel. And I, and I've learned so much from just, again, I'm always learning new things from the community that lives here in Tuolton and I'm very proud of all the things that are happening. Some of people that you think might not have much have made, have made contributions to like the Tuolton Free Clinic. I want to give a shout out to one of our businesses here that provided masks for them. And they were so happy about it. So they have more masks to give. I don't know where she's getting them from, but she's, she's ordering them and she's, she's so sweet, one of our business owners here. And I just, it's been a lot of learning and a great learning experience again for me to go out there and meet our community and the diversity that we have, tremendous diversity. So I'm very proud of us and thank you, everyone, the city. Everyone has great things to say, by the way. So, so just kudos to everyone in the city that works and in the council. Thank you.
Councillor Morrison?
Yeah, thank you very much. I'll be, try to be brief. I know we're getting late. But my first comment that I want to say, and I, and I want to give a shout out to staff for this, things are getting done. I sat in on the Washington County Courtney Committee and I don't know if Frank wants to talk about this later on, but you know, they approved the initial funding for the, the extension, the planning, just the planning. But it's moving forward for the Salt Creek Parkway between Boone's Ferry Road and Grams Ferry Road. So things are happening. And also my big shout out to, to staff is this, this food card ordinance we just approved, in the midst of everything else that's going on, we were able to take the request from a small business in Tuolton who had an issue with an unintended consequences of something we did last year, actually a couple of years ago. And we were able to fix it and we were able to fix it even today in, on Zoom. And so that was really cool. With respect to the gift cards for goodness, I sat in on a meeting last week. Beaverton gave a shout out to Tuolton and they are in the attempt of, they are attempting to copy that program. So that's a, that's a really cool thing. And while I'm on the subject of food, Pact with Pride, which is a partnership of the school district, the Foundation for Tiger Tuolton Schools and the student bodies of Tiger and Tuolton High, both are desperate for funds, as are Tuolton Food Pantry. And I am really pleased to announce that, well, let me back up here. Last Thursday, US Bank announced a $250 million fund that their employees could tap into to help COVID-19 affected nonprofits in their community. And so tomorrow I will be reaching out to Margie at the, who runs the Pact with Pride program and to the Tuolton Food Pantry. We got all the, our paperwork done this afternoon and there'll be a total of $3,000 donated to each of that, those organizations in partnership with our family's contribution. And so I'm, that, that made me really happy that we were able to get that done. So they, by the way, Pact with Pride is serving eight hundred and fifty meals a week right now in the Tiger Tuolton School District. The Metro Homeless Measure is struggling and I think hopefully Frank, you're going to talk about this. I know that was, there was a presentation at the Washington County Courtney Committee that was a really very good presentation. It really is not going to impact too many businesses nor too many individuals. And as the city councillor from Milwaukee stated last month, when the Clackamas County Courtney Committee looked at this measure, we have to start someplace. And I, I think it's, I'm, I'm in favor of this. I think it's a good starting point. And I think it's, it gets us moving in the right direction of trying to fix, and not fix, we're never going to fix, but to work on eliminating some of the homeless problems and making it a little bit easier for everybody. Finally, I do have an issue with the city trail that's around the high school. I sent an email to Sherilyn over the weekend and sorry, it was over the weekend, Sherilyn, I apologize, but it got caught my spam folder. And then it turned out that Frank had gotten an email from somebody else regarding it. And I think my missed email was a little bit misunderstood because I understand that the school needs to shut down. But the trail belongs to the city. City trails are currently open. And so what I would like to have is at some point in time, a discussion on how that partnership works with the school and who actually has the authority to manage that and how those decisions are made. Because that decision, when they originally made the request in September to be able to lock those gates during school hours, they were told no. At some point in time, I'm, I'm not sure what that process was, and that's what I'd like to discuss. They began locking the gate during school hours and now it's locked permanently. And so, and not tonight, but somewhere down the road, I would really like to have that conversation.
Okay. Councillor Kellogg?
Thank you. I'm going to sound a bit of a more somber note that a lot of the information that I'm hearing and reading indicates that we lack herd immunity for what's been happening and what's to come. And I think that we ought to prepare ourselves for a much longer enduring crisis than what we expect today. I don't say that with obviously any joy, but with expectation that we might be enduring this throughout the fall. I know a lot of people are looking at the end of April or potentially May as a date that things will return to normal, but I don't think that scientifically we're going to get there. Today, there was a joint announcement from the governors all along the West Coast about that they will reopen their economies and put stay at home orders away only if there is medical evidence of that. And I don't think that we're anywhere near that in terms of, of a threshold. So as we prepare for budget meetings going forward and other activities of the city that foreseeably would happen throughout the, the summer, we, we have a lot of worry to deal with. And I know that Sherilyn and her group of administrators are working every day to combat this. But I want to sound kind of a sour note that we're, we're not anywhere near being through this. And this may endure throughout the summer and perhaps onward. And so I want to focus our preparation on all fronts for a longer enduring containment, if you will. And I don't again, say that with any joy, but those are the facts as I see them.
Okay. Councillor President Grimes?
Thank you. I just would like to echo all the other people who have praised Sherilyn and her staff and the city workers for how well the city's been functioning during this crisis and how the level of service that we've still been able to provide to residents and the level of safety to residents and also the fact that we're able to keep the city open for the business that needs to be taken care of during this time. And I'd like to extend my gratitude also to the essential workers that we have in the city, the operations crew and people that are, you know, out there every day going to work, making the city, you know, safe and clean and running and operating and how much I really appreciate that. And this is such a difficult time and we're, you know, creating new policy and new procedures all the time. And Sherilyn is at the forefront of that. And I just, I really appreciate the work that they're doing and I'm very grateful and very impressed with how everything has been going on that line. And I'd like to, again, just praise their work and say how grateful I am for that. And, and how proud I am of our community and how they've been responding. And this is difficult and, you know, everyone's been good so far and we just need to stay the course. And I just really think the community has risen to the challenge and I'm just very proud of the city and proud to be a Tuolton resident.
All right, thank you. I'm going to be brief because I'm in several meetings a day at this point with all the different levels of government and then concerned citizens and businesses. And I've been sending y'all, you folks, daily updates and meeting notes. But a few things I want to touch on tonight is we can't lose sight of the census. The census is going on right now. We're, we have a lot of distractions. But most of you, most of, most of the residents who are still listening should have received a postcard from the Census Bureau with directions on how to respond. I checked right before the meeting and the national response rate right now is at forty-eight point eight percent of the US has responded. Oregon is number sixteen as the fifty with a fifty-one point three percent response rate. I'm happy to report that Tuolton is at sixty point seven percent. My goal, my challenge with Mayor Snyder and Tiger is that we both want our cities to hit eighty percent as a minimum. Tiger is behind us right now at fifty-nine point eight percent of response. But I truly appreciate the folks who have responded to the census so far. But we need another twenty percent of our population to respond so that we get those, the numbers reported and ultimately get the dollars we need from the federal government to support the services here in the community. As Paul mentioned, today was the Washington County Courtney Committee meeting that was done virtually. One of the things that was approved unanimously was the expenditure for design work to extender Salt Creek Parkway east of Boone's Ferry Road. It's basically from Boone's Ferry Road over I-5 over into the Stafford area. Mayor Knapp had some questions but was supportive, so that did get approved. What I was super happy about was the Metro recommendation, and we've been talking about tier two corridors, that Metro did approve, or actually I shouldn't say approved, Metro is recommending that the ninety-nine W study is a valid tier two corridor and that it should be funded along with Highway forty. And two seventeen is, they need to do some clarifications before they will approve two seventeen for tier two status. Highway twenty-six was not approved for tier two status. Later in the day, I had a, was on a call with Representative Bonamici. And you're hearing the media from both senators and from congresspeople that there is a fourth COVID bill or a fourth CARES bill in the works that the parties seem to be at loggerheads right now with and looking for a compromise where they are looking for additional funds to go to individuals and businesses and also to fix some of the mistakes they made in the CARES Act, oversights they might have made. So they're working on that. And finally, I just want to again, thank the residents of Tuolton, as everyone else said, for cooperating and heeding by the stay at home order. The only way we're going to get out of this is together and to squash this thing and not spread it. You're seeing those dire PSAs from the state of Oregon about not killing someone by going out and gallivanting across town. So I appreciate people doing that. And that's all I'm going to have for tonight because it is getting late. So we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
I got a motion as second to adjourn our April thirteenth city council meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And thumbs up. Look unanimous. Thank you all for attending tonight and have a good evening.
Thank you. And thank you, Frank, for all your hard work on our behalf.
My pleasure.
Number one mayor.
Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye. Nice seeing everybody.